Hit record, Jamie, we're ready to go, four o'clock. Good, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the council meeting Monday, February twenty second, uh, twenty twenty one, Baltimore at four o'clock. As always, just remind everybody with their, uh, electronic device, you can hop at home. Dog barking in the background. And I'll ask if anybody has any additions or deletions to the agenda before I go into the first motion? Nobody? Okay. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one, as circulated or amended. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Lake.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All hands up. Any declaration of interest from anybody? Hearing none. I have the motion here from the previous meetings. The council hereby does minutes of the regular meeting of council were held on Monday, February the eighth, twenty twenty one, and a closed meeting of council were held on Monday, February the eighth, twenty twenty one, as circulated or amended. Move by.
Counselor Jengra.
Thank you.
Counselor Tabucci.
Thank you. Any areas of emissions in those minutes? Anybody noticed? Hearing none. Call question. All in favor? Carried. All hands up. Thank you. Uh, up next, we have a CO report, report on the twenty one budget process. Mr. Scorchinsky, please.
Thanks, your worship. Just a brief update for council as we close out February with respect to where we're at in the budget process. So since February the first, which was our public draft budget meeting, uh, held virtually, administration has been working diligently to revise the twenty twenty one budget, while ensuring it meets council's vision, corporate values, and strategic plan focuses. On February first, the twenty twenty one draft budget had the tax levy at five point six four eight million dollars. Administration has now reduced this to five point one two million dollars, which includes operating and capital, an overall reduction of five hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars and four hundred and fifty five. This reduction does not include the elimination of any municipal services and has been achieved strategically by increasing revenues where appropriate, finding cost savings and efficiencies, renegotiating contracts, and revising the long-term capital budget. The twenty twenty one budget, operating budget in comparison to the twenty twenty operating budget is approximately a hundred thousand dollars less. The twenty twenty one draft budget calculated at five point one million dollars amounts to a generalized two percent residential tax increase for this year. The final approval item for council to decide is the amount of municipal funding to be provided to the Marathon Public Library for twenty twenty one. Administration has not received anything further from the library with respect to this budget item. Uh, we have requested it of, uh, the Chair of the Board. Administration notes that recreation revenues will be a moving target in twenty twenty one, given the COVID nineteen pandemic and provincially imposed restrictions. The current budget contains best estimates based on information that is currently available and what we envision to happen through the remainder of twenty twenty one. Administration anticipates bringing forward the final twenty twenty one budget for council approval in April.
Thank you for that report. Any questions of Mr. Scorchinsky? Mr. Lake, Counselor Lake.
Um, yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh, so, uh, I just wondered for administration because I, I think it's an important thing for folks at home to understand too is we've been lowering the budget in actual numbers for a fair number of years now, and yet the rate, the, the taxes for, for homeowners have been going up. Um, can you just clarify why, even though we've reduced the budget as a hard number, uh, people are still paying more at home? I know it has something to do with moving from industrial to residential, but can you just sort of either you or Chuck clarify, you know, why we keep reducing and yet people keep paying more tax?
Yes, I'll, I'll let Mr. Verbo handle the, the actual formula-based question, and I think that's an important note. So, you know, if you think about, you know, the reduction of a hundred thousand dollars over last year, it's an even larger reduction if you factor in we haven't considered CPI to any effect. So it really amounts to a much larger decrease in an operating budget. But with respect to the question, uh, itself, I'll turn that over to, uh, Treasurer Verbo to take you through the mechanics of it.
Well, every year, can't really say that, uh, every year we've been reducing the budget compared to last year, we've reduced operating mainly because we've, um, recycling, for example, is a, a big safe. Uh, what we've seen since two thousand and twelve is the assessment has been shifting from industrial and commercial into residential. Big one is that is, uh, housing sales over the last eight years and especially over the last four have increased largely as a large, more significant amount. And so the assessment has gone with that. And then what we have to do there is we divide the total amount of how much the tax levy is needed divided by the assessment to get the tax rate. In actual, uh, the last eleven years, the tax rate has gone down, but the tax levy on many of the residential homes have gone up just because they've taken more share of the assessment.
So may I throw a comment in there too, Counselor Lake? I think if we look back at what administration, we've asked them and tasked them to look at taking some of the monies out of the reserve for capital purchases as we have done in the past. So overall reflective, it should show a less amount of money coming out of budget, but the, we, the money's actually coming from reserves to offset those to bring budget in a lower amount. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Scorchinsky, Mr. Verbal?
Yeah, so what we've done this year as an example is it's a very small capital, uh, uh, budget. But if we look at the loader as an example, we've built a capital reserve over time, and we're using those monies to fund that purchase rather than raising it through the tax levy, which would increase the levy itself and ultimately the amount of taxes needing to be raised. So, uh, you know, that, that's a, I wouldn't say that's a best practice. That's a fine practice because that reserve was specifically built for that reason. But to use reserves to reduce the amount of the levy, uh, reduce the amount of the levy is not a good practice. So that's something we try and avoid and something we, uh, definitely advise council not to do. Um, and I can say in, in the last, uh, I think this is year seven for me with the budget. We haven't done that at all. So it's the appropriate way to manage the budget is, is what we bring forward.
Right. I don't think, uh, from all my experience as a council, has never looked at that practice as, as a best practice, and I don't think we've ever really implemented in any time that I can recall. But the reality is, uh, from time to time when you build your reserves, no different than the fire department and, uh, capital reserves for purchase of equipment, you utilize those funds from time to time, and this is one of those years where we're utilizing the funds to offset the potential higher increase to the homeowner and a higher budget through operating, uh, levies, right? So it's a good thing from time to time to tap into. Counselor Tabucci.
Yeah, and I just caution that built into this budget from my rec, or recollection from our review is we're not really replenishing much in that or replenishing that thing as a planned issue. And if we look at last year's, the unforeseen costs of, hate to say it, but the, uh, tug, the washout we had with the sewer replacement and the chiller, those are all things that we, that reserves are also for, for those rainy day things and big surprises. So I caution council that even though we're doing it this year, and again, it was, as administration kind of restated, we still have to make sure we, we put money back into that fund for those issues and, and that'll be part of our budget, uh, when we pass the budget, so.
Thank you, Counselor Lake.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I guess part of my, my reason for that question is as we go through budget, it's a chance to think about our priorities. And I do think when I look into the future, the only way to shift that burden off of the residents and still be able to grow is by growing your industrial and commercial base. Um, and so, you know, like, as we start, man, with recycling in particular, you're starting to say we're barely able to afford some pretty core services to our values. So it really, to me, this is a, a good wake-up call for, you know, really promoting economic development and really stressing that the way out of these sort of budget crunches is to, by growing commercial and industrial, that way our residents don't have to bear um, kind of this additional burden, right? Like it's the curse of a small resource town. Um, and so that just, it, it, it reminds me that that's got to be front and center as we move forward.
Absolutely. You know, we've worked on that really hard with the Extraterrestrial Tax Act. And Mr. Verbal, uh, along with Mr. Scorchinsky, we just talked about that with Barry to make sure that those, uh, individuals are identified in our community. So those tax dollars come back to us. And of course, going forward, we're, uh, we're looking at the redevelopment of potentially the mill site. Uh, we've been talking about that and looking at reworking that site with the opportunities for development. And of course, with generation, uh, going through their, uh, their, like, defined feasibility study coming forward and then their environmental assessment well on its way, we, we can potentially hope to have some, some, uh, increased industrial taxation within our community, which will offset the, the impact of the residents. And there are a lot of communities that I know of that are talking through money travels that are, they don't have any industrial period. So the residents pick up all the taxes, uh, for the municipality and some small commercial sector, but we're lucky that way. So it's all good. So we'll have that budget presented, uh, in the spring as, uh, as administration has identified. And of course, we typically, some years, uh, have been better than others, but you know, with, uh, with good operational aspect through administration, we, we tend to have surpluses from year to year. That, that's where we go back into our reserve accounts for those, uh, those potential future uses and purchases of capital or whatever. But we're, we're not doing the best, we're, we're doing the best practice. We're not doing it to offset the tax increases. That's a, that's a bad practice. Okay. What we, up next, and no other question? I don't see any other hands. So we're good? Anything else, Counselor Lake?
Yeah, just to, to answer Daryl's, uh, or sorry, uh, CEO Scorchinsky's comment about the library. Um, so just to clarify, we, we had a placeholder number in the budget. We asked for comments back in the library and they have not responded. Uh, I'm just trying to clarify the, the communication chain there and where we're at with that decision.
Yeah, no, they did respond, and I, and I know, uh, Counselor Tabucci, I, I believe they had a board meeting last week, um, at which time that was an agenda item. So I have been in correspondence with the Chair, uh, who did advise us such, so I'm, I'm not sure if one of, uh, Counselor Tabucci has a update on that process.
He has his hand up, so we'll get it, we'll go to Counselor Tabucci.
Uh, yes, just an update. We didn't hold a meeting. It was, uh, discussed about the budget. We asked them to, uh, the CA or the acting CEO and the, uh, Chair are going through the budget, uh, to take into consideration some of the, um, restraints or the range of the, uh, budget. So they will be coming back with it, uh, the next budget meeting will, or sorry, the next the board meeting will be in March, and we will have a revised budget to either approve or not approve, approved to move to, to council.
Okay, and we, we had shared that with them that they would have some time to rework the budget based on numbers they need to look at. Okay, so thanks for all that. And, uh, up next, we have a verbal update on the COVID nineteen pandemic situation here in Marathon, as well as the district and, uh, the province. Mr. Scorchinsky.
Uh, thanks, your worship. So today really going to focus on, um, our recreation facilities, um, I guess fortunately or unfortunately, the way we view them. Um, so obviously, uh, we're seeing a, a large increase in the number of cases within, uh, the Thunder Bay centric area, uh, unfortunately. Um, we're still at a zero number here in Marathon, which is what we like to see. Um, and, uh, we're in continual contact with our partners, uh, both, uh, the family health team as well as Nosh, uh, on that item. But in terms of, uh, our recreational facilities, so at the current time, the town of Marathon's had the red control zone of the Ontario COVID nineteen framework. Uh, so I guess, uh, the beneficial part of that is we're out of grade, but it's still very restrictive in what we can and cannot do. Uh, so with respect to the arena, over the course of the last week, since being put in the red zone, administration had consulted with our ice user groups and developed a nice user schedule for the remainder of the season, which would take us till the end of March, early April. Uh, today, the Marathon Minor Hockey Association Board of Directors notified administration that they have made the decision to cancel their ice season for the remainder of this year. Uh, Marathon Minor Hockey is the town's largest ice user, and without Marathon Minor Hockey utilizing ice, it is not cost feasible to keep the ice at the arena in for the next four to five weeks. Administration is therefore recommending that the ice plant be shut down this week and the ice removed. With respect to Lakeview, uh, Lakeview Community Hall, we plan to reopen with the ten participants plus coaches and instructors restriction in place, as well as physical distancing required. Town programming such as fitness classes would be re-offered. Private rentals would be offered on a limited basis for individual skill development with no games or practices allowed, uh, as per the red zone controls, with strict rules enforcement and a sanitization fee charged for each rental. And obviously, we've already drained porthole pool and started our, uh, shutdown of that facility, uh, right now. So, um, I guess a little unfortunate to get that, uh, news from Marathon Minor Hockey today because administration uh, had built a plan and, and planned to bring that forward, uh, to council to keep the ice in for the remainder of the year. Uh, but that is where we stand as of, uh, this afternoon.
Okay. Any, I see a couple of hands, Counselor Lake, and then Counselor Tabucci.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, your worship. Uh, i- indeed, uh, uh, difficult news. Uh, I just, uh, you know, uh, working in the school and seeing lots of young folks, I am, um, pretty constantly aware that there's very little for our youth to do right now, and, uh, in a pandemic, uh, situation, uh, it feels like, um, we should be doing everything we can do to provide, uh, rec facilities. I'm just wondering if, uh, before we make that decision to take the ice out, if we might be able to send administration back to Marathon Minor Hockey for one last sort of sit down to say, is there any way, um, we can make something work? Because I just, uh, man, I, I, I see, uh, in my own children and certainly in the, the, the students I had in my classrooms, a, a real uh, lack of opportunity. Uh, the CMAJ, the Canadian Medical Journal, just put out a a paper today that said students are getting an hour or children are getting an hour and a half less physical activity a day than they were this time two years ago, and their use of screens are up thirty hours a week. Uh, it's just, it's, it's not a good situation, and I do wonder administration's done a really nice job of being able to find creative solutions uh, instead of, you know, making a pretty final decision. I'm just wondering if we could send, uh, administration back to try to, try to work something creative.
Okay.
Okay, I'm assuming that the mayor recognized me to speak since we're kind of awesome. Okay, so about, uh, Lakeview here. Um, I understand that the, the, some of the classes, because we have all that space in where they do some of the physical fitness courses. What, uh, what's the plan with the seniors section? They are the most vulnerable, I'll say, um, to this, the, the COVID. Have we made any um, accommodation for them? Because that five person indoor, is it really worth opening and subjecting, and you know, the risk based on that?
So I'll, I'll answer, uh, Counselor Lake's question, then Counselor Tabucci. Uh, so with respect to, to Counselor Lake's inquiry, um, from an administrative perspective, there's no, uh, rush to take the ice out from, from our end. Um, you know, this time of year, given that we're in the middle of winter, um, there's, the, the cost to operate the facility are very nominal compared to, say, summer ice when the plant is continually operating because of the humidity and the heat that's outside. So, um, you know, certainly we'd be happy to go back to our user groups. Um, we do know there was also interest from, uh, both the figure skating club and the old timers and ice usage. Um, and we do believe that there'd be, uh, an appetite for private rentals as well, uh, given that, you know, there's very few facilities to utilize right now. So, um, if council wants to provide that direction, um, we're certainly happy to, to do that this week. Um, to, to wait another week to make the decision to, to shut the ice plant down and take it out, uh, is really nominal from a, a budgetary or, uh, administration perspective. So, um, we can certainly do that. Uh, with respect to Lakeview, um, we will reach out to the seniors' club. Um, it will be challenging for them to utilize, uh, their clubhouse space just because of the layout and the inability to distance within that facility. Um, what we did previously was offer up, uh, the opportunity to utilize Lakeview for physical activities. Um, and we'll do that again, uh, because you can get ten individuals in there with the proper distancing. So, you know, if they wanted to, uh, undertake a walking program as an, as an example in poor weather. So we'll certainly reach out from that perspective. Um, but until we actually get into the orange zone, uh, which will, is likely a, a little time coming, um, I don't foresee us being able to open up the clubhouse area for the seniors, but we can certainly offer up the gym space.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Valance.
Yes, um, thank you, your worship. Will the virtual programming through the recreation continue with yoga and the online boot camp?
Um, that's certainly a possibility. Uh, I'll ask Mrs. Goodchild to answer that one for council.
Hi, everybody can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, so with going back, uh, in, into the red zone and having live classes, we would discontinue the virtual classes um, at this time. However, it's easy to pick up and start again if we see the need to do so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jengra.
Uh, so I'm just wondering if we are going to reopen Lakeview Community Hall. Right now, there is no indoor walking. It's usually available at the high school in the winter. Is that something we could look into? I know there's lots of seniors or people with mobility issues that would like to do more walking, um, and can't necessarily in the winter.
And we could certainly, uh, have our recreation program or look at that, no question, and offer that, uh, as a, a regular program, I'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll circle back to Counselor Lake's comments about, uh, potential usage, uh, from both high school students as well as other youths in the community. I think, uh, Mr. Scorchinsky laid it out that there is a minimal cost, there's still a cost. We have to be very conscious of the fact that there's a cost of operating that facility for the next month and a half. Coming this weekend, we don't know. I think Thunder Bay is gonna, the, the province is gonna identify what's gonna happen after Friday with the numbers increasing the way they are in Thunder Bay, specifically Thunder Bay, but we fall into the Thunder Bay District. I think we don't go any further. We give council, uh, give administration direction. If we haven't got secured, uh, users and time slots by those users, and if things stay the same, we can allow administration to say, go ahead, keep the ice in. But if it doesn't, it changes, and there's no guaranteed concrete users signing contracts for that ice, figure skating, old timers, and drop-in or rentals, then we give direction to shut down Monday morning. Um, I think that's, uh, February or March first. Does that sound fair? Okay, with Mr. Scorchinsky, good with that?
Yeah, we'll take council's direction and, uh, you know, we, uh, we, we've kept the ice in purposely because we thought we would have the opportunity for users and residents to use it. So, uh, hopefully we can have some positive discussions this week.
Sure, I hope they do, and I, I'd like to see people utilize the facility, but at the same time, we know we can't just keep it in for the sake of having ice there, nobody utilizing it. Counselor Lake.
Yeah, and you know what I, like, I, I go to that skating, uh, trail at Penn Lake, which is awesome. And I've never been there without a bunch of people on it as well. And I, I wonder if some of that, uh, you know, rental abilities would be, uh, if we had a lower rate for people just to get out and skate, especially if the weather's bad outside. Um, like, I don't know if, I don't know what the current rate is, if you just wanted to rent the ice for an hour if, if we didn't have it full, uh, but I don't know, like, you know, certainly my priority right now in the pandemic is giving people an opportunity to have recreation. Uh, do I mind losing a little bit of money on the arena to do that? I, I don't. Um, so I don't know if there's a way to, again, creatively offer a reduced rate, um, for, like, say, you know, Mayor Rick and, and a couple of your buddies want to go skate circles. Could you rent it, um, as long as you were following the protocol? Again, I'd, I'd love to see administration, uh, if there's some creative ways around just giving people the chance to, to get out, be safe, but be so, but, you know, kind of, uh, use those facilities.
So we have thought about that. Um, and, uh, what we were planning to do administratively, um, if we were going to continue to operate, uh, was offer, um, all rentals at the, uh, youth rate, which is eighty-six twenty, uh, comparative to if you were to rent it privately, it's up around a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-six dollars. So we thought that would encourage more people to utilize it on an hourly basis as well, um, and really fundamentally doesn't affect us from a, a budgetary perspective. I think it actually works in reverse where it would give us the opportunity to rent more hours, uh, because it was a more cost competitive per hour rate.
Okay, Counselor Lake.
Sorry, just, yeah, I mean, and again, maybe you, you certainly, I mean, the treasurer's on the phone, but from accounts, like, from my perspective, fifty bucks an hour, like, i- it's the money right now doesn't matter to me as much as people's mental health, um, that opportunity to get out and, uh, and do something. Um, so, like, I know we're a business, we are, uh, but right now, for the next little bit, given how hard this last shutdown has been, um, certainly, uh, I would support some flexibility on that fee.
So our, our law, well, I, my, our logic on that one was twofold. Um, you know, really, one, it's in fees and charges. Um, administratively, we like to be consistent with things that have been council-approved. And the second is from a practical perspective, um, it's really, you know, if you're utilizing eight to ten people on the ice, it's ten dollars a person, which is pretty reasonable for an hour of ice time.
Right. So, so because of the restrictions, uh, Counselor Lake, you obviously, that's, that's the, the bottleneck because the amount of people in there is no utilizing of dressing rooms and all that, so it becomes more of a hindrance other than maybe just going for a skate. We have two facilities that offer those opportunities, and I appreciate that, and I think we're all a hundred percent in support of having more opportunities for our, utilize things. But again, if they're not gonna get in contact with administration and coordinate any type of rental or usage over the next week, and there's a province-wide reduction and maybe going back to gray, it's an automatic no-brainer Monday morning, ice comes out. We'll see what that happens over the weekend, and the administration take on that role. We agree that we allow the, the fee to be charged at a, uh, at the lowest youth rate, and, uh, we'll see if we can drum up any business in that regard over the next week. Okay, thanks. Okay, up next, I have a motion here for the, uh, check runs, and the following checks be approved for payment. Uh, accounts payable, four ninety-five thousand, it's four hundred and seventeen dollars fifty-one cents, and payroll in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twenty-three cents. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
Okay, so Counselor Valance, move, Counselor Lake, second. Any questions of those check runs? Hearing none, a call question on the favor? All hands up, thank you. Uh, up next, we have some reports, uh, reports on boards and committees. Myself, I'll start off with, uh, our Thunder Bay District Municipal League. Obviously, it was a very bad day that day. We, uh, we had our meeting, there was some miscommunication of, uh, the meeting location was actually a Zoom meeting that was held for the Thunder Bay District Municipal League. So there've been some media reports that there was a meeting in Marathon. Uh, no, it was a Zoom meeting for the Thunder Bay District Municipal League. And of course, all seventeen, uh, communities participated, and one of those communities obviously was Shriver, and the mayor, uh, Dave Hamilton as well participated. And later that evening, Dave had a tragic accident and lost his life. So our condolences goes out to his family, his wife, and his, uh, son and daughter, and all the people and, and the residents of Shriver. Uh, it's a great loss for their community and, uh, the region, and as well as, uh, as the, as the, the whole area of politics and, uh, and the commitment to the community is, uh, is, is gonna be a big hole and void to fill. So hats off to all the other members of their councils to take, uh, up that role for Dave, and, uh, condolences out to the family and friends and, uh, of, uh, Dave and the, met, met people of Shriver. So with that being said, uh, the couple of things we discussed that day, obviously, was one of the big items was the, um, EMS services that were provided, uh, through the district and from the city of Thunder Bay who, uh, runs the, uh, EMS services. The consultants came in and did a report, uh, driven by the city to look at the services provided within the Thunder Bay District. And basically, didn't really consult with anybody other than maybe the potential, um, closures, uh, facilities that would be closed, which was the Beardmore, uh, the tri-communities, uh, Nipigin, Red Rock, Dorian, as well as Shriver Terrace Bay. Uh, didn't consult with anybody else, didn't consult with the First Nations communities, and brought a report back to the city. So we talked in extents, uh, about that problem, and we asked, and there's gonna be a letter later on in our meeting about, um, support to go back to the city, to each member of council, to ask them to, uh, stop that, uh, process and to have those consultants or a new consultant come out and actually consult with all the communities, because we're all gonna be impacted by any change in the services in EMS, whether it's in Shriver Terrace Bay, Beardmore, Nipigin, the tri-communities, because our buses, I don't know if you're familiar, but our buses travel all over the place, and I mean, our buses, the, is the ambulance. Uh, they, they might get called to, say, for example, highway calls that support Manitowoc, and then that means our bus is tied up. And we don't have a second bus maybe to cover, or we have two buses out, we have no buses in the community, no, vice versa, Terrace Bay, Shriver. So we, we, we share, um, paramedics as well as buses a lot of times, and luckily, it's not really impacted our communities to the point where we've really seen, uh, some devastating effects of that. But it could potentially do that, so that's a big concern. And of course, the burnout and PTSD potential for our paramedics, uh, not only in Marathon, that's our concern, because I've met with the paramedics. That's their big concern about the twelve-hour shifts, then they get called out later, and there's no coverage. We have a hard time bringing in people to cover, but anybody's off, and we have a couple off right now, so to bring somebody from Thunder Bay to stay here, it's really hard to get the back coverage. So that's a problem. We never had the opportunity to say that and, and, and bring that to the consultants, uh, for Marathon. So I wrote a letter to Mr. Gates, who is the EMS, uh, manager for the Thunder Bay District, and, uh, expressed those concerns, and I haven't heard back from him, so this, this will come back in a report, uh, for us to discuss later on in the meeting. That was a big one. Highways, of course, uh, was always on the top of the agenda for discussion. And the league itself in regards to how does it look going forward. So highways, uh, was, uh, was about, the, of course, we all know, we all live here and travel. We haven't been doing much traveling lately, but our roads are not always, uh, in tip-top shape. And from the time of the mandated storm, uh, clearing from eight hours after. And from the time of the mandated storm, uh, clearing from eight hours after a storm to be center bear to bear, it doesn't happen, and uh that was a concern. And we just brought that to the government at the Roma meeting, so it's an ongoing, ongoing, ongoing battle. It just keeps it on the top of the table, just to continue uh discussing. Uh, going into our AGM, uh, there was some discussion around the overlapping of Noma again, because members, myself included, sit on the Noma board, but there's six-month lag because Noma's uh new executive are elected every two years in the spring. Thunder Bay District, now we canceled our one, uh, two meetings went down to one, which is a fall meeting. Members uh chose that. So we're gonna revisit that and have a discussion around that again in in March. So our AGM is March thirteenth, and everybody's invited to participate through the Zoom and to discuss that and uh various other issues coming forward on the uh, the AGM meeting. Uh, again, nothing in person. We have the Noma meeting coming up in the spring, and it's a Zoom as well, or um, a virtual meeting. And um, so there was talk about that. So what does the league look like going forward in the in the fall? We'll see where we are with the vaccines and the pandemic, and that was it. So I don't know if there's any questions over the uh, the league meeting. Uh, Mr. Cons, Counsel Valance.
Thank you, your worship. I just do want to start off by saying condolences to uh Mayor Hamilton's family. I had the fortune of being able to meet Mr. Hamilton with the Board of Health, um, Health Unit Organization, and he was nothing but absolutely kind, wonderful, and just great all around. So very devastating to hear the news from that. With that being said, there was an announcement a few months back now through, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Conservative Government and improving infrastructure along Highway Seventeen with um stops being built, one being at the Manitowoc Corner. Is there any progression on that or any development, any type of conversation around those um builds?
So, and the government comes up with a five-year uh transportation uh plan, and of course, Northwestern Ontario, they have identified spots where they're going to increase the width of the highway, passing lanes going up to to alleviate some of the the potential uh concerns of of accidents. Uh, rest stops were part of that as well. We've also identified in the past, and it's still probably in somebody's plan on somebody's desk, about having um, you know, the the salt sheds located like centrally. So for example, coming out of Manitowoc is fifty-six kilometers, going from Marathon to to Dunk Lake is about fifty-one kilometers. And from White River to Dunk Lake is about forty-eight kilometers. Well, they don't, they don't, they all just meet, and they go back to their perspective as uh gracious. There's no salt shed or sand shed in those, where with one, that's just an example. There is a jackfish, but if there was one there, the trucks wouldn't go back to their locations empty. So you send a truck out, sand and salt, and then he's empty, he's gotta come all the way back to the to their main depots to fill up to go back out. Well, that takes hours, and it doesn't maintain the highway property. So those are simple, common sense suggestions, but the government's never acted on it. So we continue to bring that message to them, and through their highway planning, we used to have an actual meeting with the the Director of Transportation for the region, and they would have our input. Uh, that hasn't happened in a few years, so uh, I'll bring it back maybe to the Noma table and see if we can see if we can get the new ministers, uh, um, the the new Director of uh Transportation in the Thunder Bay District that at least invited us into discussions around the potential planning, and you know, passing lanes and widening shoulders and rock cut cleaning. Because they are doing some good work, and we know from our previous discussions, we'll never see four lanes from Nipigon to Sault Ste. Marie, never, in a million years. So that's okay, but just continue to enhance the unsafe areas with a third lane. You know, so if you have the third lanes always incorporated somewhere where it's a hill or unsafe, and you know, so you can pass those transports with their bigger vehicles, it would, it would stop the potential of you trying to pass in a in a spot that's not really good for passing because of the conditions of the road. So we'll continue fighting those battles. Thanks for that, Counsel Valance. Anybody else? Okay, so Counsel Zingra has a verbal update on the Community Development Assistance Fund.
Okay, so we had our first meeting as the the CDAF Committee, and we did have an application that we approved already. Um, so we had a project from the Rod and Gun Club. They're going to be updating and fixing up their their docks that they have out there. So we've given them two thousand dollars towards that, which is what we've we've given that same club the last, the past two years. Um, they did also let us know that they were hoping to have the kids fish derby this summer, but with the pandemic, um, they're not, they're not thinking we'll be able to do that this year, but this dock is something that they need to be able to provide that service to the community in in the future. So we thought that was a good uh, a good project to to support and help them go forward with that.
Good, thank you. Any questions of Counsel Zingra? No hands. I do Counsel Zingra, so that's good to hear that we're we're helping the Rod and Gun Club, because it's good to see that. So we would encourage other user groups and community groups to come out and and apply for this fund as well, so that we can utilize those funds to assist them, to make sure that they're healthy and strong, not just in the volunteer aspect, but also within the financial aspect, because a lot of small groups just don't have the means to raise even a thousand dollars sometimes to make their organization go much further, so we'd encourage them to get out and uh and participate by applying to the town for some opportunities to discuss with your committee.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I look forward to seeing more more applications come in for that, through that program.
Great, thanks for that. Okay, up next, I have a motion here on bylaw, bylaw number two oh one, sorry, two thousand and one being a bylaw to amend bylaw number nineteen forty-one, a bylaw to govern the proceedings of council and committees of the Corporation of Town and Marathon, be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed this twenty-second day of February twenty twenty-one. I need a mover, second, to put that on the floor.
Counsel Valance.
You.
Counsel Tabucci.
You, questions on that bylaw? Nobody. Wow, that's good. Basically, just the proceedings of what we do at council, it's all just spelled out. Uh, just talking about unfinished business is the highlight, but other things we all follow through that on our agenda is pretty good, so.
So your worship, uh, just, I'll I'll give council just a very quick overview. This is just a very administrative change. Uh, what we've done is is we we feel a best practice is to move unfinished business up into the agenda. Uh, so it's dealt with uh as a fall, a flow-through from the previous council meeting before we get into new business. So that's that's the only change.
Okay, sounds good. All that being said, everybody is good with that? All in favor? Thank you. All hands up. Okay, up next, we have uh, uh, some, some uh new business requests, but she's in town should be called me seek his support of the resolution pertaining to municipal elections qualifications and disqualifications, copy of this to all members. So the, they're saying basically that therefore be resolved, the town should be calling and lobby the provincial government to amend Municipal Act and Municipal Elections Act as it be, so that people with a criminal record who have not had their record cleared from the RCMP database by order of the Governor General of Canada be prohibited from becoming a candidate in the municipal elections. And that elected local government official be disqualified from the office upon conviction of a serious criminal offense and must resign. I need a mover, second, to put that on the floor. Counsel Lake.
Counsel Valance.
Counsel Valance, okay, comments? Counsel Lake.
Um, yeah, I, I, maybe I don't understand the uh charter rights. I I was under the impression that um, the right to run was protected uh for everybody. Uh, that voters would decide whether somebody with a conviction or not was worth, or worthy of being a an elected official. But I, I thought that was in the Human Rights Code.
Yeah, I don't have the comment to give to you in that regard. I I was always under the assumption, if you had a criminal record, depending on the severity of the criminal record, you could not run for council in the past, but um, I didn't get administratively to check it out. So I don't know, Mr. Skortinsky has any comments on that, or Mrs. uh, Ms. Lee's?
Well, we, this one I do believe we would have to look into. I think it's uh, it it's pretty, it touches some pretty gray areas, uh, and it's uh, you know, I wouldn't want to make any recommendation to council until we did a full, a full review of it. So what I would suggest is uh, we just uh table this one until the next meeting.
One of our unfinished business items that we can put on the agenda, move it on.
Actually, I I I'm sorry, I I did actually add uh the wording from the actual act.
Right.
And it doesn't say anything about uh having anybody with a criminal conviction being disqualified. So I think um, I think there's only a few uh qualifications on that list, and not being criminal, that's not on there.
Okay. So what you were saying, whereas, whereas the people with dubious characters, that that's part of the commie uh resolution?
Yeah, no, and I, I know, so I sent you, um, I also included on that.
Who was eligible.
Who was eligible.
The note that says who's eligible.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll, uh.
Well, hold on, before we table it.
Counsel Zingra, if you guys wanted to have a discussion now, or you want to wait till we can get more clarity on the the resolution is is reasonable, I guess, because there might be some people that do want to put their name forward, you know, that they do have a criminal record of some sort, but we get clarity on the actual wording in the resolution, so that we can support or not support. Counsel Zingra.
Um, I'm fine with having the discussion now or when we get clarification. I personally wouldn't want to, want to approve it personally. I think people, they've pitched, served their time already. Um, what Louise did say is if they're serving a sentence currently, they're not eli- eligible. So to me, after you've served your time, whether you've gotten your official pardon or not, you should be eligible to to run, and then it would be up to to voters to decide if you're, if you should have that position or not.
Yep.
Counsel. Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just, uh, that's not really correct. It's actually uh, when you submit your nomination papers, you're, you are making a declaration to the returning officer or the clerk stating that uh you are qualified and that there's no reason why you can't be disqualified. So it's really not up to the voters. It's up to the clerk whether or not that nomination is going to be um approved uh at that, at that point in time. So it's really up to the candidate to say whether or not they are uh qualified or disqualified.
Based on the act.
Based on. Yeah, sorry, I just meant it would be voters who decided if they vote that person in.
Exactly.
But thanks, thanks for clarifying.
No worries, sorry.
Counsel Tabucci.
Uh, yeah, on on the issue, because if we have the discussion, we don't support it, then why bring it back as new business or unfinished business? The other one that they have a provision of is if you're convicted, I believe, or something, uh, you're forced to resign again. Um, there's a lot of issues going on in in other jurisdictions where that you have no right to get remove a mayor or whatever it may be, or any counselor kind of thing there. Um, and and if you're convicted of a criminal offense, depending on what your penalty is, y- y- you you've served your penalty. So I I worry about that one, too. I mean, if you, obviously, you're in jail, you're gonna miss three meetings and, or you're in prison, you're gonna miss three meetings, and you'll be disqualified regardless. But if you were convicted of something and you paid a fine or, you know, then those are issues, too. So I'm a little worried, there were, were some about that. Um, so I don't support this moving forward at all, regardless of the clarification. So I think it's just one item we could remove and not bring it back as unfinished business.
Okay, Counsel Valance.
Yeah, I was gonna say I would seek clarification, because to me, it almost doesn't make sense as to why we're even having the conversation. It kind of seems a bit vapid on my end, so I would need further clarification to kind of understand why we're even having the conversation. With that being said, I'd also support Counselor Tabucci with um just not even bringing it back.
Yeah, so just to, just also, AMO is working on a, with the provincial government to for for disqualification of people who are sitting as well to change some of those rules. So that's in discussion right now with the ministers. Uh, to say, to to be able to remove a a mayor or a counselor from a council uh, uh, without, with more opportunity rather than less, because there are some pretty radical counselors and mayors out there that need to be removed from their office. So, but there's no tools in the toolbox right now to do that. So uh, they're working on that as we speak. So how that look comes out in the future, uh, I don't know, but I agree with both Counsel Tabucci and Valance. I think we don't need to bring this back. I think the individuals who have submitted their name for the Elections Act and the Elections Legislation have to follow the rules. If they meet the criteria of the rules, regardless of their past, they've, they, they've qualified, and they put their name on the ballot. So with that being said, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor of this motion? I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna declare it as defeated, and we'll move on. Thank you. Up next, we have a request that has been received from the town of Orangeville seeking support of their resolution pertaining to the greenhouse gas emissions. In regards to um, Orangeville, they're looking at uh, then whereas the Ontario Government recently purchased three gas plants and moved that could lead to increase provincial greenhouse gas pollution by more than four hundred percent by twenty forty. Uh, that goes on to talk about the impact it has uh in regards to the gas-fired facilities and the greenhouse emissions. And they're requesting that the government not allow, um, Associates, Mr. Spies requesting the government of Ontario to develop an amendment plan to phase out all gas-fired electricity generation and direct the ISO to accelerate the use of renewable electricity and supply energy storage and efficiency in fifty all sectors. Again, the motion's very clear, but the reality is not there. I mean, unless you come up with some unbelievable renewable energy other than nuclear, uh, there ain't much out there. And then if you're talking about the EV market, everybody wants to get a new fancy car and plug it in, so it doesn't burn the fuel, fossil fuels. Where are you gonna plug these things in, which is no gas plants running for electricity? The city of uh, of Toronto, and a lot of the Southern Ontario, the GT area, was uh, was doing, was having uh continuous blackouts without those gas plants being built. So now there is a surplus in power, but if you continue to add on to the to the grid of usage, you're gonna see a problem. The idea of the East-West tie was to have power being moved all throughout the province, so you could potentially see more um, you know, hydroelectric facilities, for example, in Northern Ontario being developed, which is great for the economy for our area. But it puts power into the grid that can now be moved to the south. Whereas prior to that, it was the bottleneck at Wawa, so the power couldn't move past Wawa. Now, once the line is done, we can move power. So down the road, this could be a benefit, but um I'll, I'll leave it there. I'll ask a mover, second, to put on the floor anyway, so um, move by. No movers, no seconders?
Counsel Valance.
Valance moved?
Uh, Counsel Tabucci, a second.
Okay, any comments? No hands. Counsel Tabucci.
Um, I'll go again. I I understand the rationale. However, the previous government phased out coal, which was, I'll say, if I remember correctly, and and I I don't want to mislead the people, but it was, it was produced so, or a lot more greenhouse gases into the atmosphere than the natural gas did. And they phased out the coal, and they converted, the plan was to convert a lot of them to natural gas, which was a little, a little cleaner, I'll say, than than coal. The idea behind this resolution also is that they develop a green energy plan moving forward. I'm all in favor of the, of pressing our Ontario government to develop a green plan, energy plan moving forward, because we abandoned the um carbon tax. We, we, you know, we abandoned the moves that were were major and deliberate term to move to a, you know, renewable, either solar or whatever. We have a wind farm pro- project that's still on the books, that was totally, will not, never be considered moving forward, because there is no plan for renewable. I understand that renewable will cost more initially, but that's the trade-off you make. But but, and and it's something that, at least if there's a plan in place or force the government to make a plan, some of those projects could come back on board. So although I don't support that they sell or close the greenhouse plants, the idea behind them forcing or encouraging the government to develop a green energy electricity plan does have some merit.
Okay, Counsel Blake.
Um, you know what? I feel like I'm I'm echoing uh Counsel Tabucci a little bit, but uh I don't know enough about the grid in Southern Ontario to support or or say anything with the gas plants. I think supporting the idea of green energy, especially in Northwest Ontario, makes sense. We have a voice, which is Noma. Uh, we're putting in the East-West tie, which, I mean, lots of us were against. I think we all wanted regional energy prices as opposed to sending our energy down south. But if we're going to do that, then I think we need to have a uh, Noma come forward with a policy around developing hydroelectric and green in the north that we can send. So I mean, I, I just don't know enough about gas plants, but I certainly would uh say that, you know, as through Noma, that should be our voice saying, let's go uh with a hydropower that makes sense in Northwest Ontario.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll give you a quick overview of the Ontario Green Energy Act that Mr. McGinty and his government initiated with solar and wind, and it's still costing all of us as Ontario, and it's a lot of money. Because it didn't work, and it never was laid out properly, and the subsidies were eighty-two cents and sixty-five and seventy cents a kilowatt hour for green energy, which we told them at that time, and I recall clearly, I think me, me, myself and Counsel Tabucci gave that a little debate in the hallway one time in Toronto about this. The reality is, you can put a lot of hydroelectric dams in Northern Ontario, just like they do in Quebec and Manitoba, for one and two cent kilowatt hours of energy production, and they're very low impact to the environment, only during construction. As they run in the flow of the water, the flow of the river, they're very low impact to the environment and create a lot of clean, green energy. So I agree with that. So uh, Counsel Tabucci, you guys hand up, but if it's more debate, or we just call the question on the motion. Counsel Tabucci.
I understand that the idea behind subsidizing these big projects was so that the technology could develop. And that's what I'll always say again, by stopping it, the subsidies or reducing the subsidies basically stifled the whole industry or potential industry in Ontario. Again, I'm not saying that we should support this particular resolution, and I I agree I could let it die here, but I do agree with councillor Lake who's saying through Noma, we've got to press the Ontario government to develop some kind of energy plan moving forward, and we can't rely on burning fossil fuels to produce energy or electricity, you know, for a long-term solution. And we're talking long-term solutions 20, 10, 20 years down the road, not just short-sighted issues, and they haven't developed a plan other than opting out of the carbon tax.
Okay, so they're also requesting AMO to bring this to the government's attention. So when it comes to the AMO board in March, we'll discuss it through our Northern Caucus and and bring that up for our concerns about that. So with that being said, I'll call a question. All in favor? Against? It looks like it's defeated. Thank you. Up next, we have a motion. Councillor hereby support the attached receivable receipt from the city of St. Catherine pertaining to the universal paid sick days in Ontario, further the coverage most before onto the individual listed in the originated resolution. Move it a second and put on the floor. Councillor Lake, second?
Councillor Valance?
Thank you. Now, if you read the paragraph, it's asking for the provincial government to give guaranteed sick days through the pandemic as well as continuing on. I think this is something that could be very devastating in regards to the cost for employers through the employee programs. The federal government right now has 10 sick days through the pandemic. That should carry forward until the pandemic is over. What that looks like after the fact, I don't know. But for now, I think that that is something that we have to be conscious of, that there is. So they're just basically saying that they want universal, like the universal sick days for all workers in Ontario during the pandemic and beyond, regardless of the workplace size, type, or immigration status. So councillor Tabucci?
Okay, not to badger the current government, but this plan was in place under previous governments. You were dinner, you would get five paid sick days or qualify for five sick days. And remember, if the pilot project of a guaranteed income or what it was, the minimum income program was in place to study, a lot of this would have alleviated during the pandemic. I mean, the the idea behind employment standards bare minimum of having five sick days built into your employment is not a bad thing. I mean, that's what the Ontario government did to protect workers through the Employment Standards Act. And it's not something that, oh, it, you know, it'll be terrible. I mean, like, you look at what, when when it was enacted, Tim's, Tim, Tim Horton said, oh, they could never afford to do it. And the one franchise franchise owner, you know, did that reduce people's wages because of it arbitrarily. I mean, there is a minimum standard you need to have. And the idea behind the low-paying jobs, not being forced to have to go to work when you're sick or you're vulnerable, is that one of the main reasons, I believe, and this is my opinion, that the pandemic is not being controlled in certain areas, because if you felt sick, but you couldn't afford not to go to work because you wouldn't couldn't afford to put food on your table, you're going to work. And I think it's not a bad idea to support it again. It has, it was in place. So it's not like, you know, businesses shut down yet the next day because it was offered. So I think we can sup, I would like to support this moving forward.
Okay, fine, but just remember right now, the federal government has a plan for 10 paid sick days for employers and employees through the through the government's, federal government's plan for the pandemic. They're asking this to go on beyond that as well, so that could have a huge impact to the small, mom-and-pop type business out there. And that's okay if you feel comfortable. Councillor Lake going up next?
Maybe I misread the resolution, but the the resolution, on my understanding, is universal sick leave would be that the government covers the cost of those sick days, not the employer, right? Like this would be like a, you know, if you were at Robbins and you had a sick day, it's not that Robbins pays it, it's that it's it's government legislated and paid for. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm just not understanding what universal sick leave means, but.
No, they're they're saying that the endorsement legislature is sick leave and calls for the government of Ontario to permanently legislate universal paid sick days for all workers in Ontario during the pandemic and beyond, regardless of the workplace size, type, work or immigration status of. So that's a very open-ended, but it sounds like it's they're legislating for all workplaces to have a mandatory amount of sick days paid for by the employer. I wouldn't, you're talking, you know, one million workers in Ontario. I don't know how the government of Ontario would ever afford to pay that. Councillor Valance?
Yeah, your worship, can we just get a little bit of further clarification? To me, I guess I'm blurring the lines of understanding why this is a municipal problem, talking about Employment Standards Act and like lobbying for better employment standards. So because to me, I would just assume that they would follow either their collective agreement or the legislation set out by the province, right? Personally, myself, I don't think I would support it because, yes, the small to medium-sized organizations that aren't franchises, who have already been impacted throughout this last year between lockdown, in and out of lockdowns, I do think, and when we look at the longevity of continuing this throughout after the pandemic, I don't think they could support that themselves, so.
Yeah, there there there's a whole bunch of stuff in the in the in the requests. It's talking about the federal government, but the big thing is, you got to remember is the therefore, because the therefore, whereas the therefore resolve that they're asking the government of Ontario to legislate paid sick days for all workers in the province of Ontario through the employers. So this is, it is the Employment Act Standards Act. So I don't know if I could support that first thing, but I'll go back to councillor Lake. No? Okay, so councillor councillor Tabucci, another question? Councillor Tabucci? No? Maybe you can't hear me, I don't know. So
Sorry.
Yeah?
I just had it off. I understand that the Employment Standard Act makes it mandatory that employers pay 4% premium on wages in for vacation. So it's not unheard of that the government has legislative minimum standards for employees. I mean, it's up to a part-time employee if they want to take it in cat or a premium plus or bank vacation. I mean, it's just, it's, they have vacation days or built in into the system mandated to the Employment Standards Act. This is just another phase that they would produce the 4% premium or whatever to produce five sick days, which is equivalent to what they would generate, what is already mandated that they generate for vacations.
Okay, so it looks like a debate. Councillor Valance, one more time?
I guess I'm just struggling to understand why the city of St. Catherine's would choose to take this on. Like, I I don't get why, especially right now throughout COVID and all the stuff we have and the challenges that we're working through that they would lobby the provincial government for wage increases or sick days, so.
Well, if you read the whereas the Ontario Medical Association, 11 of the GTHA mayors and chairs representing the Ontario's largest municipalities, obviously, there's somebody in there that's from St. Catherine's who brought to their attention of their mayor council to have a resolution created to pass through their city council to be representative of all other municipalities to endorse. Councillor Tabucci, one more time? Your mic, your mic, your mic?
On that note, again, if that was the case, councillor Valance, we wouldn't be discussing hydro. We wouldn't be discussing recreation. We wouldn't be discussing a lot of things because it's our base preview as a council. Water, sewer protection. Fire is not a mandated requirement. Fire protection is not a mandated issue of of municipalities, nor is recreation. We do a lot of cross-referencing and as a lobbying group, it's it is some of our responsibility to see if we if we see some injustice in our community, we bring it forward to the people who have the authority to make those changes. So this resolution supported or asking for the government to consider this is just our lobbying sense to say that there's some injustice in a community where poor or underprivileged or or minimalized workers are forced to go to work because they have no other avenue but to go to work or lose money. And and I think it's it's something that we can support either through Noma, through AMO, or whatever it be. But remember, the Ontario, the previous government have this in the, had this for employer or for employees, and the current government decided to take it away. So it's not like it wasn't there before.
Okay, so we're going to call a question, but there maybe there is already a 10-day federal government program for the pandemic to receive wages if you're off sick, but nobody can sit back and say, I can't get paid if I'm sick from COVID to stay home because the government of Ontario, Canada, might not be checked money in the mail the first day, but there is a 10-day coverage of that sick days. So with that being said, I'm going to call a question. All in favor of this motion? Go forward from St. Catherine. We got councillor Jingra, councillor Tabucci? All against?
Can we abstain from this? Well, like, I I actually don't feel like I
No, you either have to say yes or no, one or the other.
I don't feel like I can vote on this one, so and I guess I would vote against it.
Okay, I also vote against it because I think it's an impact of the the business community too greatly to have legislative sick days being paid by all employers in the province of Ontario. So with that being said, it's defeated. Thank you. Up next, we have this, my resolution is a little wonky because it was a copy of the St. Catherine's one for the next one, so we'll have to reword the resolution. But the resolution would be hereby supporting the letter in regards to the the city of Thunder Bay having the consultants request deposit any decisions made by the to the city services, the SEMS, until the meaningful full consultation process be conducted with all communities and and would be helpful to include presentation and data and clear explanation of how the proposed changes will be met in need of our community. This also identifies the Thunder Bay area as well as the Robinson Spirit Treaty area. So the Maities and Superior as well in our district. So the motion, all I said to reword it, but I need a moment to put on the floor.
Councillor Valance?
Councillor Valance. So basically, it's just saying we need the city, we're going to send this off to every city councillor and the the mayor to have them not approve any changes within the EMS services in the Thunder Bay district until there's a full opportunity for consultation. Any comments? No hands? Okay, so we'll have the clerk. I'll reword the motion just to make sure it's clear, stating that we all approve this later to go back to every member of the city council and the mayor, so they all see it. And everybody else, we've asked to the Thunder Bay district, to send their resolutions to every member of the city council. All in favor? Very, thank you. Anything else where adjourned? Nothing? Just encourage people to get out. And as councillor Tabucci noted earlier, that we we did some of the work that we we didn't formally have budgeted for things that popped up throughout the year. And it was a page that was on your backs of your agenda, so it's quite a bit of money we had to spend that these emergency things come up from our reserve account. So councillor Lake may mention get out there and enjoy the the outdoors. It sounds like it's supposed to be nice for the next week, so hopefully you get out and enjoy outdoors, walking, skating, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, utilizing facilities we have in our community. Take the neighbor's dog for a walk if that be it, so enjoy. Move by. Councillor Lake, second?
Councillor Valance?
That we adjourn at the hour of 5:03. Thanks. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, good night.